Your patience, everyone. It's Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025. The time is 7:03 PM. I call this meeting.
Councilmember Luck?
Here.
Tine?
Here.
Hendricks?
Here.
Oliver?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Samuel?
Here.
Mascherano?
Here.
Next item is the approval of the agenda. We are going to remove items six and seven because we properly noted. Six and seven are out. And then we had a comment about whether or not we want to consider eight tonight. Eight is dependent on item seven to go into effect. Vote on it tonight. And it would go into effect when we vote on item seven, or we could move it to. Strong opinions. Rachel, you've said to move it to the next meeting.
I mean, I don't have a strong. I just thought that it would make.
So I'm somewhat of the opinion that it's on here. We might as well get it done and then the business is. To be removing items six and seven because they. Um, approval of consent agenda, three point one approval of bill is dated July 17, 2025, and payroll ledger, 11, 2025, excuse absence. Regular council. Their motion to. There a second? Any further discussion?
This member Oliver?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Buck? Samuel?
Yes.
Tine?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mascherano?
Yes.
Citizen comments. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to five minutes. Council will take comments into consideration but will not make decisions at this time. Council will not engage in back and forth dialogue but may respond to a speaker with brief factual information or refer the speaker to the town manager to arrange a meeting with an appropriate staff member for discussion with the speaker. However, the council has no obligation to engage with the speaker by either the. I'll start with our signing sheet as always and then. Kathleen Myers? And Lindsay Lane? Okay. Okay, I got it. Okay. Lindsay Lane, if you would, step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then we'll start your five-minute timer.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lindsay Lane. Of La Riva del Lag. So my comments tonight are about the underground, a nightclub which was. April. Ninety-three. Special space of La Riva del. Nightclub was prepared by the owner, elevation bowl. Base next. The original plans show access to the nightclub. This was changed and a new. Bowling alley and. Was approved and added for access. Email correspondence. This was the. They apply. Allowed the nightclub to open. The town proceeded as if the nightclub was part. Of the business. So the nightclub does not have a business. A separate liquor license also not written. Nightclub is operating using elevation license. Please let me. December 12th, 2020. Modification of premises application. Listing elevation. Submitted to. The change proposed was describe an expansion of premises. No mention was made about the. At best, this was. Effective. nightclub and a bowl. The application was. Plus the nightclub not applied for a liquor license though. Town residents did not know about. Had no. Terms. Insurance company for. The homeowner. Cancelled the policy effective. Effective December 30. Our insurance costs La Riva's homeowners went from a little. Thousand dollars. Two hundred. Thousands. Close to a fivefold. Actually, we hadn't say, but. There are also safety concerns. nightclub which is open until AM. And recently, I am. Dylan Flea. Just want to emphasize. How distressed the. About what has. Thousand. Um. Just about. So I respectfully request that the town review. Particularly around. I know like.
Kathleen, did you? Kathleen Myers, if you would, state your name and address for the record and then we'll start your five-minute.
Yes, my name is Kathleen Myers. My address is 1940. My philosophy is very simple. Civil rights editor John. This once said, when you see something that is right, not fair, not just, say something. I'm speaking today and that. Um. Uh, I got thrown off. My name is Kathleen Myers, licensed real. I hold a Juris Doctorate from Denver and proudly call. Most recently, I represented Lindsay. While this property has much to offer, including three-ounce bedrooms, two-heated garages, and views of the town. Our efforts to sell it. Barely impact. Unusually high HOA fees and the presence of the. Despite being actively listed in the Summit and Denver Metro. March 5th to June 5th. Unit drew only three bona fide showings, no offer. Consistent feedback from buyer agents, stern for the lanes, twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollar annual agent. When I compared HOA fees over across hundred and seventy-two Summit County properties and the eight hundred and fifty thousand to. Only ten had higher fees. Only ten had fees higher than the lane unit and all were in Breckenridge with full-service. Complexes, offering amenities like pools, spas, and fitness centers. Riva does not have any of them. But La Riva does have, unfortunately. Round nightclub. Presence that not only negatively impacts perception and desirability and adds noise and vibrations to the building, also has triggered real financial. In nineteen, or in 2024, La Riva was designated an ill. exposure. Saying to you by their insurance company, citing the increased liability posed by the nightclub and its effect on. Replacement insurance premium. By a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and. Nightclubs bring with them inherent risk and alcohol consumption, potential drug use, late-night disturbances, and a higher likelihood. These risks and ripple. Lowering property values, raising insurance premium. This is not the vision that Dylan promotes. Our town is known for its breathtaking outlook. At highest deep-water marina in America, both class. The best farmer market. A nightclub, especially one with limited oversight and community. Dance and stark contract. I respectfully urge the council to review the. And the ongoing impacts of. I also ask that you evaluate potential remedies to address the financial already suffered by the homeowners at La Riva. And to protect the broader Dylan community. Thank you. Time, tension.
Rabbi Joel Schwartzman? Anybody else here to make a comment tonight? See else on the computer here to make a comment?
On to item five, the facilitation proposal presentation.
Hi, hi. You're up, huh? Uh, my name's Laura and I am the. Director of our Denver office for Cushing Terrell and in charge of our planning group. And I am joined today. Oh, I did. Sorry, it's got a lag. I'm joined today by Art Molito. He's our lead urban designer. And Megan Cranston, she's an architectural designer and involved with our community. So our team is much bigger than what we have today. I hear, hear. So we're backed up by a number of folks that are back in our office. Notably, Nora Bland is our director of planning and community engagement and would have a large part in the project if selected. And perhaps unfortunately for timing, she's presenting at a planning conference, national planning conference for higher education right now. So she's. Tonight. Uh, but we are here in her stead. Also, part of our team would be our facilitation expert, Alex Majewski, and our lead designer Charlie Deese, who is also presenting at that planning conference with Nora. So today you get the three of us. And Cushing Terrell is a multidisciplinary design firm. We have been in business for over eighty-six years and counting here in the Colorado area for nearly twenty years. And here in Colorado, out of our Denver office, which is where we work, is the center of our planning department, architecture, and we are fully integrated as well with landscape, structural, civil design. So that gives us a working knowledge and language and vocabulary for all of the pieces that you're looking at in your town center master plan. And with our deep knowledge of facilitation, it really sets us up well, I think, to help you out. So in our twenty-five minutes, we understood we have twenty-five minutes to present. So what we'll go through is some similar project experience, go through some of our engagement strategies and tactics that we have used, our overall process, some opportunities and challenges that we've seen, our overall approach, as well as then a couple of case studies, and then we'll open it up to any questions. And with that, Art, I'm going to let you take us through some of our similar project experience.
Yes, we've got a number of different recent projects that we've completed, I think, that are related to this project as well. So one of the more recent that you may be aware of is just our engagement with the Dylan Marina Restaurant, the design workshop through the community, and also presented it to the council a couple of times. Also, Town Italian Ride, we did a feasibility study as well for housing, a concept plan. Another project worked with the community of NS, series of focus groups, public meetings. And one thing I want to point out a little bit about this, we've got about ten of these different examples, but although the projects might be a little bit similar, you'll notice the one thing that's maybe common throughout them, they, each one of them is a little bit different. We have a large toolkit of engagement tools that we, we take from, and each one is kind of tailored fit to the project. So we work with the clients to kind of find a strategy, an approach that works from a cost perspective and the project need. There we go. A few other ones, working at the town of Superior just outside Boulder as well on a comprehensive plan, as well kind of North Denver area with Lock Buoy. As I mentioned, each one kind of has its own uniqueness to it. You know, one of the things with Superior was our pop-up events that's been really successful. And then really in Lock Buoy, you know, a lot of what these projects, we typically do website and online surveys. I think one thing that we learned a little bit through COVID was being a little bit more nimble and providing a larger amount of options to reach folks. And online is, and virtual options are often actually preferred by folks in addition to just kind of being in person. Um, a few additional ones, working with the, with Glenwood Springs on their comprehensive plan. One interesting piece or one important part of that plan was also kind of meeting with Latinx community and working with language translators as well to kind of reach many of those focuses. And also with Brault County, one kind of interesting piece of that was just the leadership summit that we hosted as part of that. And then also working with the communities in the Royal Cork with Carbondale and Basalt. And then maybe a couple of takeaways, kind of based upon equity-centered engagement. You know, there's some common themes that we find through here, just finding those local events, pop-ups and picnics. And it's really about meeting people where they are and when they are, trying not to schedule events that are maybe all the. Time, thinking that some people, some people might be easier to meet, you know, when they're taking a lunch break during work, or, you know, if you've got kids and family, maybe meeting directly after work isn't always the best time. So just trying to be flexible and use a variety of different tools.
And some of those strategies to invite participation, knowing that there's a lot of different user groups, a lot of different stakeholders, a lot of different personalities. So making sure that there's that ability to allow for honest and open discussion, because really this does need to be about listening. And so we've anticipated having a number, at least three staff members at every community engagement. And we've found that that is a great strategy for being able to listen. Some folks want to be able to have direct one-on-one conversations. And so by having multiple people there, we can kind of keep those discussions going, make sure that there's that ability to hear a number of different voices at the same time. Some of the other strategies are leveraging existing groups, making sure that those folks that are already meeting, we can join in on that. We found providing food and childcare at meetings and offering incentives helps drive participation as well. And we do know that you guys are great at providing food. I discovered some amazing chips based on that. Being transparent in the process as well, so that your community really understands what is the process, what does it look like, when will I hear how my feedback was received, making sure that's clear. Again, as are indicated, using multiple platforms, different times of day, online, something that's more passive and drop-in or something scheduled and direct, and advertise, making sure that we're utilizing your existing platforms, that the word is getting out. And then this one, I think, is quite key, is, is really preparing graphics to illustrate the questions, the concerns, the areas around which we want feedback very clearly. Sometimes these concepts in master planning can be a little bit more abstract. So being able to clearly illustrate the questions being asked, we've found really helps drive good, clear, and actionable feedback. And that process really does help get us to finding that shared objective. So that first piece is really getting the background information, really understanding where you're coming from, what needs to be asked, and then crafting that engagement plan. Again, as are illustrated, each plan is going to be different for your community and really based on what it is you're looking to get and, and, and get to that shared objective. Then we'll seek that community feedback through a number of ways, ultimately evaluate that, analyze it, put it in a graphic, easily understandable form, and then report that back to staff and council. And this importance of feedback loop is critical. It really does help everyone here how their feedback has been heard, received, and then understood. And it really does help us get to that sense of shared objective. And I think, Megan, since we have been here before, I'm going to. Little bit about what we're expecting.
Yeah. So as most of you know, we've been lucky enough to work with your community in the past, even just a little bit. We're excited about the chance to get to come up here again. So, and also we've, we've learned a lot about the challenges you have here. You have a very diverse community, and everyone has different views and aspirations for what they want this community to be like in the future. You've got full-time residents, part-time residents, seasonal folks, people who are lived here for years. So we want to make sure that we're tapping into each one of those audiences and listening to them. But that can also be a little bit of a challenge. Like any mountain community, you've got housing issues, working, worker shortages, parking issues, things like that. What I've read in the plan is that we want to make sure that whatever's done, we're increasing that walkability, we're increasing that pedestrian-friendly sort of downtown area. But we have great opportunities here to, to execute this project. We've got a lot of really great events coming up in the summer and the fall and the winter. So we can leverage all of those events and then potentially create some, some different, different activities. But that'll help us tap into all those different audiences, which is really what we need to do to make sure this is, is totally inclusive and to get to that shared objective and consensus. And also, one of the things we heard a lot when we talked to folks about the potential restaurant was that there's a great vibe in this community. There's a very, like, local passion and presence, and we want to make sure that that is carried into anything we produce. And as we're sort of crafting the language around this activity, is making sure that we're taking that into consideration. And the best way for us to learn about that is by having those conversations and listening. So we're really excited about that opportunity here. So as, as our proposal stated, we sort of have a four-phase approach, and Laura touched on this a little bit, but first phase is we'll start by working with, um, working with the community, gathering information, getting all of our bases, you know, put together, identifying some of those initial events and crafting that plan. And that also looks at crafting some specific messages, potentially looking at some, like, graphic look and feel, so things become consistent as we go out into the community, so this becomes recognizable, right? So people go, oh, I remember I talked to them at the farmer's market, and now they're here again. And we can keep that conversation going and we can start to build upon it. So we'll have our first round of outreach. We'll have, you know, we'll kind of figure out how many events we want to do within that phase and how many different audiences can hit. Then we'll take a beat and say, hey, how do we want to, like, revise this a little bit? Where do we need to be more nimble? Where are, who are we not reaching? And where can we find those people? And then finally, we'll come back together with a consensus of what we've learned from your community and how that relates to the plan. And then start to formulate, you know, maybe here's some, you know, themes and areas that rose to the top that we kept hearing over and over again that relate back to that, that can help us kind of decide what those next steps are and how to start communicating back to the community. Okay, so real quick, we'll go through a couple of case studies. Art introduced a lot of our, our background, but we felt these ones were pretty relevant to what we're doing here. So first off, I'll talk just about our work at the Aspen Lumber Yard. It's a huge affordable housing project up in Aspen, which may not seem like a downtown planning effort, but actually, the, one of the major pieces of this project was site planning. And there are a lot of public amenities within the project. So we wanted to make sure we were engaging with the community and making sure that we were getting those amenities in there that they wanted and needed. Also, it's a gateway project, so it sits right at the begin, at the, right across from the airport. It's one of the first things you're going to see going into the city. So we wanted the project to also reflect the community. So what we did is we, we used that process. We came up with a design, we presented it to the community, we took their feedback, we went back and integrated that design, and then went back out to the community, said, here's what we heard, here's what we did, and here's our next step. So we created really a chain of design and that chain of communication, so people could really see how their opinions were influencing what we were doing in the design. Um, one of the most interesting exercises that we did, and we had a lot of fun with, was we made our, the town put their little developer hats on, and we gave all of the people that attended the open house $100 to use on different amenities on the site. And so we had little buckets where you could put in your dollar amount. So you had to really decide, like, okay, I only have so much money. What do I really want here? And prior to that exercise, we had heard that people just wanted smaller buildings, want smaller buildings, smaller buildings. But when they actually had to put their dollars to work, we saw that they wanted more amenity spaces. They wanted all of that great park space and bike trails and, you know, bike parking and things like that. So it was really interesting, once you sort of have, you sort of change the conversation, change that point of view, and you can really get some valuable information. All right. So I think we head over to Art's, talk about Frazier.
Thank you. Another ongoing effort that we have happening right now, just next to Winter Park, is comprehensive plan for Frazier. And one key component of that plan is also developing a downtown vision plan for that area. As part of this, it's looking at tackling issues that are often very common in the mountain communities that we work in, such as that recreational-based economy, traffic, parking, and affordable housing. We're working on providing this aspirational village for the downtown area. And we're working with developers and stakeholders and community members to kind of integrate their desires into this plan. The hope is that we're really trying to be proactive about growth rather than reactive, and eventually be creating this downtown Riverwalk district, kind of in the core of town. Here's some of the engagement. You know, we've done a couple of open houses, we've done some pop-up events, which I missed that on the last one, but on the, on the upper right there, that's kind of an example of our pop-up event. They were giving away cookies and swag. So we took that as an opportunity to kind of hand out some, some info flyers about survey and information on, and the project. So it's showing up at the right time and the right place to make sure that we could take advantage of those opportunities. And kind of right now, we're in the stage of working on really fine-tuning that vision, those goals, strategies, and the actions associated with that downtown vision. And really, you know, some goals of this are also kind of place-making and connecting that main corridor, Highway 40 to the river and vice versa. So just a really fun project to be working on in the mountain. So I'll hand it back over to Laura to chat about the last one.
Oh, and this is the one that's got the graphics. All right. Chaffey County. And this one was updating a twenty-year-old plan. The biggest challenge in this community was really bringing a community that was at very opposite ends of the spectrum in terms of balancing private property rights with community and environmental objectives. And so developing that growth plan really took a lot of effort to bring a community that was at very opposite ends to a level of consensus. And they did ultimately adopt a plan, which we thought was pretty successful, given where the community started. And where we found to have the greatest effect was to get into scenario modeling so that we could begin to show what development and growth could look like. They're pretty abstract concepts. And so by beginning to model what a less-density growth plan looked like, you'll see that on the far left, that that just shows that there's more land impacted by that amount of density. If everyone's saying low-density, low-density, you impact more of. If everyone's saying low density, low density, you impact more of the land. So being able to show that and then showing a density around nodes with some density in the sort of connecting core, or whether in the far right, it becomes a really putting density around where there was already density and what that begins to look like. And so by being able to illustrate some of these concepts more clearly, we were able to get to those shared values in the community. And and we were able to help them find a level of consensus, land on the preferred scenario for their community, and ultimately adopt a plan for growth unanimously, in fact. So it was, but going through those steps to really get everyone there was was important. And it took graphics, it took clarity of communication, it took a lot of listening and really distilling what was important to those various stakeholders to land on what those shared values were. So that was one part of it. But it was also asking a lot of questions and having a lot of data points. So over 3,400 data points went into that. And there were a lot of different methods used. And again, this is because it was a larger, complete, comprehensive plan. So there were a lot of different techniques used from the map pinning, dot voting, post-it notes, open-ended survey questions that we were then able to kind of mine through what those themes were. But in terms of that, ultimately, that growth piece, that graphic creation and clarity of explanation, I think, is really what helped get the community onto the same footing. And then again, this that that sense of how information is communicated. So that's a little bit about our case studies. So why would you pick our team? We have done a lot of community-centered engagement over a lot of different topics. We've found that meeting people where they are with a multifaceted approach, with multiple personality types to engage with lots of different community members, being able to to note those that, you know, may be quieter and would like to just have a one-on-one conversation, how we entertain some of those louder voices, how we can set rules of engagement and expectations for how we engage and primarily provide that structure for engagement. We also have a deep understanding of the diverse stakeholder needs. We've worked in communities similar to yours. We've seen a lot of different ideologies in place that we can usually understand where folks are coming from. We are a Colorado-focused team, but we do have a diversity of experience throughout the Mountain West. And again, we do have our planning team is really trained in this facilitation. And because we also are engaged with architects and landscape architects, we do know how to speak this language and translate. We have a very data-driven approach. Those, all of those points of data are really important. And being transparent about that, we've also found really does help community members see that their voices are being heard, that it's being implemented, even if it doesn't mean that's the the prevailing majority opinion, there's at least that sense that it's being heard. And really, we just love to work with you all. We've really enjoyed our time working on the Marina Restaurant Project. And, you know, we we love, we love Dylan and we keep teasing Nora, then threatening her that she's not allowed to move up here. I still need her in Denver. But we do love to spend a lot of time up here. So we would just love to to continue our work and and help you out with this facilitation. With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Thanks for your presentation. Counsel, questions or comments? Thank you for being so thorough. I loved how you talked about transparency and we hear that a lot from our community. So I think you really hit the nail on the head with that one. And then sort of teasing us with some clear, actionable feedback, it really appeals to me. And then I like how you lay out your four-phase approach because to me, that's really easily explainable to people that, you know, there's information gathering and then a meeting and then a rethink and then another meeting and then the outcome. So it sort of sets the expectation. I appreciate how you laid that all out for us. And as always, I love having you guys here too. Thank you, bringing just like a great energy to the room. So thank you for being here. And as they vacate the podium, we have up next, we're talking with the Keystone Policy Center.
All right, good evening. How's everybody doing?
Great.
Good, good. I'm Trace Faust with Keystone Policy Center. Honored to be here tonight, just me, so stuck with me tonight. But excited to kind of talk through our project proposal and also answer any questions you have. Jesse's teed up to support on the the slides, so appreciate that. Going to tell you a little bit about Keystone. I think a number of y'all know about Keystone Policy Center, but I don't want to assume that. So bear with me as I tell you a little bit about what we've been up to. And then I'll tell you about the team that we will be working with if we're selected and get into the project details a little bit, just kind of going over the proposal and talking through that. So if you want to go to the next slide. So Keystone Policy Center founded by Bob Craig, right down the road in Keystone. Been here for 50 years. Our offices are in Keystone and Denver and in DC. We are split up into centers. And so, and I apologize, some of the text is a little small there, so I'm going to talk through it. We've got a variety, the way that we think about our work is that we can all do a number of the things that, you know, I've worked with our Center for Natural Resources. I'm working with our Center for Agriculture right now. I've done work with our Center for Tribal Engagement and I sit on our Center for Civic Engagement. So we do a little bit of everything, but as it relates to client and for folks to understand where our expertise lies, we're divided up into these centers. So we've got Natural Resources, Tribal and Indigenous Engagement, Civic Engagement, Capacity Building, that's where I stand, Education Policy and Food and Agriculture. So I just want to briefly tell you about a couple of our projects as it relates to these centers that I think are relevant to the project here. Natural Resources, let's see here, Natural Resources right now. We run the Round Route Recreation Table and have for a number of years, which is up in Steamboat, up in Round County, talking about how you balance conservation, recreation, outdoors, community needs, community challenges, all those sorts of things. So I think a very similarly sized challenge and project and an ongoing piece that we work with community on there. And the civic engagement piece, we are, this is, these are projects that someone on the team has all worked with. So just as relevance there, we're working right now at the Department of Energy on consent-based siding with communities across the country for nuclear waste. How do you actually partner with communities in these sorts of challenging conversations instead of doing two-community? So a lot of opportunities there, both rural and urban conversations. And again, that's at the federal level. And interestingly enough, that project has not been struck. And so the work continues. Food and Ag, we're working with USDA and farmers on ensuring best practices that relates to farming challenges in today's kind of current state as it is. Tribal Engagement, we're run by, if anybody knows Ernest House Jr., he's Ute, Mountain Ute. And he runs our Travel Indigenous Engagement Center. We do a ton of work down in Southwest Colorado, consulting with the city of Boulder currently right now around how they do some of their work as it relates to tribal and indigenous engagement. And then on the education side, been right down the road, working with Colorado, or sorry, with CMC, doing some strategic planning, talking about childcare, the challenges of being in more remote like mountain towns and what does that actually look like for the folks that actually want to continue pursuing higher education? The challenges that people see there. We just ran the State's Community College System Strategic Planning, which was, that was actually my favorite project this year. Statewide Listening Tour, we went into community colleges. If you don't know the community college system, it's amazing. 13 colleges, like three times as many campuses across the state. You've got your Front Range folks and all the way to your more rural campuses and just some really interesting conversations happening there around the challenges. And then state and local government. So I oversee our state and local government portfolio. I think the most relevant thing I'll surface is the last two years have led the the state chose us to lead the state's Property Tax Commission, which if you're paying attention to the state legislature, it's a super fun conversation. And I let I was the lead facilitator on that for the last two years, really enjoy that because that's how I got to know Summit County Commissioner Tamara Poe, who sat on that. We had folks from, you know, Weld County Commissioners, all the way to like Denver folks to Western Slope and everywhere in between, and really got a chance to go and just listen and spend some significant time talking about the unique challenges in different communities across Colorado as it relates to our property tax structure. So that's what I'll end with there as far as relevant projects. What do we actually do? We facilitate these groups, we facilitate advisory groups, commissions, task forces, those sorts of things. We do a ton of work with, again, mostly state agencies, state and local governments. We do a lot of work with basically any state agency, I think, in Colorado. Keystone's had some part in some sort of thing that they do. We do a lot of policy development, we help make sense of things. So I really liked what the other presentation said around, you have some really sticky topics and you've got some really also technical language, how do we actually talk about that in our policies and how they reflect the people that they most impact? And that's what we center and that's what we work on. I'll go to our next slide. So this is a team that we'd have working on this. Myself, I'll come back to me as an individual in a second. Callie King Newman, who's a Summit County resident, I think she's done some work with you all as well. She's a former legislative liaison in the Denver mayor and then was a hick and looper policy advisor. Ton of state and local government expertise. Addie Fisher, my right-hand gal on all my projects. She keeps things humming along, keeps our notes, does all the things, makes sure that we're keeping things moving. And then our CEO, President Keystone, Christine, I just wrote her in for a few advisory hours. I think she has a ton of local context knowledge. She's a former elected official, both at state and local, local level. And she is just, you know, well-versed in local challenges. And so I just like to bend her ear oftentimes when I have some specific questions. So she said, yeah, I can give you a few hours and we can talk things through. Next slide, actually, no, go back to that slide, sorry. I'll say for me, fun fact, Dylan's actually the reason I live in Colorado. I lived here in the summer of 2005 as a college student. I don't even know how we got here, but a bunch of my friends, we rented some condos and got local jobs. And I worked on a horse farm and at the Quiznos in Silverthorne at the time, that I don't think is there anymore. R.I.P. Quiznos. And man, you come up over on 70, you look at, you look at, you know, Lake Dillon and it's like, yeah, I want to come here. I was a kid from rural Arkansas, grew up in a small town and fell in love out here on that summer college. And I was like, I'm going to move out here. And then I was like, I'm going to, I'm going to get a job in Denver and try to come up here as much as I can. So job situation kept me down in in Denver, but love Dylan and have a lot of context just from that time here around honestly, the warmth of the people here. And a lot of things that I heard tonight around why people care, why they want to be a part of your, I believe it's Economic Development Advisory Council. It's like, yeah, that all rings true with with the experience. People care, they love this place, they want it to grow in ways that they see as like reasonable. And that all tracks with my experience here. So just want to give that context. My background is, I was a teacher, I was a school leader. Then I got into facilitation because I always, I started seeing where the real, the systems and the policies were not always in line with the people. And so I spent a lot of time as a classroom teacher, listening to families around the unique challenges they had as related to their kids. And so I've been at facilitation now close to 10 years, just learning how to weave in those personal experiences with systems and structures that actually reflect them. So that's a little bit about me and I would be the lead facilitator on this with community. And Callie would be my co-facilitator on this and the others, again, Addie would just be kind of coordinating on the backside and Christine would be picking up my calls when I call. So next slide, please. So we'll spend a ton of time here, but this is how we march to the dates that you all provided in your RFP. Makes a ton of sense to us, feels like it's a lot of work in a short amount of time. But I think the thing I would just underscore is the deep listening component, you know? Our proposal didn't have a lot of bells and whistles because I don't think you need a lot of bells and whistles. I think what you need is deep listening and your ability to help community understand how and why decisions were made. And hopefully it was made in conjunction with community, which it really sounds like the town of Dillon and the town council is wanting to ensure happens. We also know though, as elected officials, that oftentimes decisions are made that might not be completely reflective of the entire community. And so community needs to understand, how is this decision made? And that is what Keystone does really well is, I also think the other thing about this is likability. People need to like you. We've all been to community forums, we've all gone to round tables, we've all stood up in town council meetings. And I love it here, but it can be a drag, you know, in these spaces and people are tired. People are tired of being asked for their opinion and then feeling like their opinion's not listened to. And so I think our our project approach here is really around like, how do we actually spend the most time in the listening space? And then distilling that for you all to actually do something with it. And so our real hope is just around, again, actionable recommendations. When we come and do that presentation, that it is crystal clear how we got to those recommendations. And then if I were a community member sitting in the audience and I had been to all these meetings and I'm like, yes. Like even if I don't agree with that, I know why that was the general consensus of a recommendation. If you want to go to the next slide. So just a quick overview again, and I appreciated the way that you all laid out around how you see this. I think the other thing I'd just say real quick is like, big believer in co-design, you know? Like, yeah, let's do this, but if there's some curveballs thrown or when we do some of these one-on-ones, we would love to make some suggestions of like, let's tweak a couple of things. I think like prescribing exactly how engagement's going to go, as you all know, oftentimes it's not exactly happened that way. So we have that baked in with the understanding that we might have to pivot some things. Kick off with the town staff, the site visit. And then I think the biggest thing is like really just having some opportunities to do some one-on-ones. I know with a community of around 1,000 folks, at least on the last census piece, that there are a lot of people that have shown up time and time and time and time again. And they're probably the people that you all hear from. I'd love to know who those people are, I'd love to spend time with them. I'd love to actually listen, be like, what would this actually process feel like and mean like to you for it to be considered a success, even if you don't love all the pieces of it? So that's a huge part. I think again, co-designing the six-state hybrid forums, I saw the comments you all made around what you liked and didn't like around different proposals. You know, the one thing here is like you have a ton of second homeowners and we know that. So that was the vision behind the hybrid piece. If those are better ways to engage with folks around that, would be happy to do that. So if it's truly just a continued forum around second homeownership and that's a very specific conversation, happy to do it that way as well. So again, excited to kind of get in and dig around with you all to figure out what makes the most sense. And then the forums over a six-week period. I think it's, it's exactly what we said in our proposal, which is having the conversations, coming back and figuring out, okay, we have this timeline, we have these like six topics we want to talk about. Are those the six topics that folks want to talk about, right? I have from you all, your, what you think people want to talk about. Maybe in that first meeting, we actually get some different information and we need to shift some of those meetings. That's when we go back and say, okay, let's actually think about this a little bit differently. And can we change some of these agendas around what we actually heard from community? And then again, the ongoing reports and synthesis make a ton of sense. And then again, the last piece with the presentation to you all, would love to stand up here in October and be like, y'all can do something that actually reflects what your community wants. And I hear that from you all in all of your meetings that you want to be able to do that. And it's tough to do that when you have a lot of different voices at the table. So would be excited to give you some recommendations that feel meaningful, that feel informed by community and also just makes sense for the bottom line of the town of Dillon. Next slide. As a budget overview, I know we came in lower than a lot of people. And the reason is, is because we think we can do this work very directly. And again, high point of the listen, we don't have all the bells and whistles, technical expertise, and I don't think we need it to listen well. We sit in a lot of spaces where we are not the technical experts. I do not know anything about property tax, now I know a lot more. But we passed bipartisan legislation that had not been able, that put us into a special session for multiple years because a lot of technical talking heads were sitting around the table trying to figure out what to do. And really what it actually looked like was, we need to listen to what the unique challenges are of Coloradans and actually make some policies that make sense. So I really do believe the hours we pitched here are the hours that we can do this in. I know that you all, you know, we put in your estimated total because I think as we co-design, if you all see a unique challenge and you want us to put some more hours to some of that engagement piece, we would be happy to do that. But as the RFP actually lays out and what you all need around these recommendations, we feel like we can do that in the time allotted. And with that, is there another slide? That's it. Thank you. Would love some questions, thoughts?
Thank you, Trace.
Yeah, thank you.
Questions or comments?
I like the, I like the in-person, but I also like the hybrid option.
Yeah.
Especially with a lot of second homeowners around here.
I was going to say, that was the comment I saw was around second homeowners. Is there another group of folks that you feel like hybrid is really like a need? Or is it really typically in that population? Like community members in general, they prefer hybrid?
Got families that can't leave, people working two, three jobs, you know, things along that line. They can maybe listen to it while they're doing something.
Yeah.
We do get a lot of people tuning in. Yes, we do.
Yeah. Yeah, I noticed that, which I was like, man, that's more than we get sometimes with like state task forces. It's like community, yeah. Cool. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I like the idea of the co-design. Be able to flex.
responsiveness piece.
That sort of six weeks and then like flex the topic as you go, kind of.
The, uh, I am a little concerned just as we've been, uh, just as I've been wondering through the community and stuff though, also about, um, doing, um, bilingual or not sure how that works exactly. But how to reach, um, community members that are not native English speakers.
Yeah, that's the, the vexing, ongoing challenge, I think, in so many of these spaces. It's like, are you creating spaces where people also understand like, what's the purpose of me coming to this too? Um, so we, I can just tell you two quick things. Uh, we work with, um, uh, they're called C L C, they're out of like front range, but they, they also have folks up into, uh, I think they go as far as Glenwood Springs where their interpreters are. Um, and they are all around language justice, so they go a little bit, they go a step further than just interpretation. Their whole thing is around, how do you actually engage Spanish-speaking particular folks around, um, issues that feel relevant to them? And so we like stopped checking the box of being like, yeah, we have an interpreter, nobody can, well, we tried, right? Um, so a big part of that is, uh, we, we typically deploy a type of, does anyone know Promatoras? Promatoras is like, it's a, it's a community engagement model where you're essentially finding the folks in the community, um, that actually already do this work. So any sort of like local nonprofits, any sort of like community organizers, engagers, uh, that are Spanish-speaking, right? And so instead of me going and knocking door and saying, hold on, let me get, pull my Google Translate, right? Especially working with those community members. And so we actually, uh, put that into our rates too, as part of our buffer hours, um, that we can pay direct stipends to those folks through Keystone. So it's not something that, um, there's not an issue on, on your end as far as dollars go and how those are appropriated. Um, and so we've done that before as well. Um, we did that with the climate, uh, uh, gas house reduction work that we did with the state where we literally paid like local organizers to help get folks to those meetings and like translate that opportunity for them. So be happy to talk more about that. And that's the thing that I'd be like interested to co-design with you all around is like, do we see, uh, the Spanish-speaking community show up to these types of meetings? Um, historically, right? And where are those challenges? So I would be curious to talk more about that.
Is your timeline flexible? Like if it has to get pushed back six weeks or stretched a little bit because we're noticing that a lot of people are out of town?
Yeah.
You know, getting into shoulder season or something.
Yeah, I, yeah, for sure. I think we put it within this timeline because that was just the timeline that was on the RFP. But to us, it's like, yeah, I mean, if they're, again, I think that's local context, right? That shoulder season, for instance, is a great example. It's like, this is a really, it's like doing engagement work in education in the summer. And people are like, that's weird. I'm a teacher, I'm on break, you know? So definitely is the short answer.
Questions or comments? Thanks for your time with us here.
Yeah, thanks, y'all.
Nathan, did you want to talk about the process or select?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So, uh, you have two presentations tonight, like the third. However, it's up to you all as to whether or not you consider two, uh, presentations. Wait until August 12th to see if you can do. And go into contract negotiation. Kick off the project. The other option is you can decide just.
A couple of different options.
I think you have two, uh, very reputable. That gave three presentations.
Okay, sounds good. Um, counsel, I wasn't here at the last meeting, obviously, when we decided to interview three.
Right.
Is there a strong desire to interview the third or do you, have you heard something tonight that says this is a group we can go with?
If you want to continue.
If you want to continue or not.
I think they, I would like to hear their presentation.
The third group. Similar opinions or is anyone want to offer a different opinion?
Open to either, actually.
Either.
I like what, I like, uh, what I hear tonight, but I also would like to hear the third.
Yes, I did like what I heard tonight from both of you. It goes to three, narrowed it down from 10 and they're available to hear.
Any differing opinions?
It's very important, so I, I think you, you don't have to rush it. So although, you know, time is also, time matters too, but, um, uh, I think with the hybrid option, I think just about anything will work. And everyone's talking about a hybrid option, so.
Great, so, so Nathan, what I'm hearing from the council is go ahead and keep that interview on the 12th or confirm it and we'll talk with them and then have another discussion then. At the Consensus Building Institute.
That's correct.
Okay.
C B I, so.
Great. Thank you both for being here. Um, it was a pleasure talking to both of you. Um, and hopefully we'll have a decision by mid-August. Um, reminder, items six and seven have been removed from the agenda because they were not properly noticed. So we're going to do them at the next meeting and we'll move straight to item eight, consideration of resolution number 2525, series of 2025, a resolution adopting rules of procedure for town council meetings.
Doug, would you like to take this one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I wasn't entirely involved with drafting these. Um, I did get a briefing on them that at the last meeting, uh, Catherine Nguyen came and received comments from council about proposed rules. Uh, I'm here to answer any questions about those. I did get a copy of the email, um, that she had answered, um, from Councilmember Richards. So if you want any more detailed above her answers, then I'm here to answer those.
No, she answered everything and then I actually talked to her today about the missing word. It was a missing word.
That was a good catch.
And, uh, which just confused me at the end, but, um, everything that I was at, had questions about was answered, thank you.
Any other questions or comments about this version? I would entertain a motion to approve resolution 2525, series of 2025.
I'll second.
Is there?
Oh, see, I'll, I'll make the motion to.
Okay, great. Is there a second?
Okay.
Any further discussion, council? Thanks for your work on this and, or Catherine's work on this. Pass that along. To get us in line and square and cleaned up. Um, we have a motion, a second. No further discussion, roll call. Let's remember Tyne.
Yes.
Samuel?
Yes.
Luck?
Yes.
Hendrix?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mascherano?
Yes. Item nine, consideration of resolution number 2725, series of 2025, a resolution approving an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement for Summit County Childcare Tuition Assistance among Summit County, Colorado, and the towns of Blue River, Breckenridge, Dillon, Frisco, Keystone and Silverthorn, Colorado, and Summit County, County Childcare Resource and Referral Agency, Inc., D B A, early childhood options.
We need a longer title. Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor. Included in your packet is resolution 27 dash 25, series of 2025. Essentially what this I G A does is reestablish the general guidelines for this first step program. The first step program is the six, six weeks to three-year-olds that all the towns in the county are helping fund. Uh, we started this I G A a couple of years back. Uh, and included in your packet is a cost breakdown for, uh, the school year of 24 to 25. Unfortunately, that is not a typo. We have been going back and forth, uh, with the different I G A entities. Uh, and also early childhood options, E C O, to have them weigh in on the I G A. So in front of you tonight is the I G A that has been agreed upon by all the parties. But it also includes the town of Keystone as an I G A participant. Uh, fortunately for us, we did budget 162,000, uh, for this expenditure throughout the, the duration of the current calendar year. Our estimated cost for this program year is 161,947 dollars. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the I G A.
Questions or comments for Nathan?
Just one question, really more out of curiosity. Do we know how many, um, between, what is it, six weeks and three years old? How many kids from Dillon are, are being supported by this?
We, we do have a, uh, rough number there. Um, and that's based on the cost breakdown. So the percentage of people that are in Dillon and, and we've tasked early childhood options, which actually has a, is a Dillon-based business. Uh, to break this out, the, the problem here is that they have to physically go in and map that since A zero four three five, uh, zip code encompasses parts of Dillon Valley all the way over to Keystone. Uh, what we've been told is that Keystone's going to get their own zip code, which will help delineate, but there's still going to be children that are represented in Summit Cove and Dillon Valley that fall to our share. Right? And we are trying to further, uh, flush out this whole childcare funding mechanism. The county has identified for upcoming years, such as the 25, 26 school year, that they would, uh, entertain looking at strong futures funding, uh, to help pay for, uh, the childcare subsidies that we're all currently funding. Majority of these, uh, funds from the other entities are coming out of like the nicotine tax. Unfortunately, ours are not. Ours are coming from the general fund. But long, uh, long story short, we can, we can report back as to an accurate number of how many families or how many kids, uh, our contribution is helping. Right now, we don't have a, a definitive number.
Do we have a total number of how many families are helped or? I didn't see it in there, but.
Um, well, during the last mayor's managers commissioners meeting, uh, for the S B K funding, so that is, uh, oh, the application actually includes the first step funding. There are 335 families that have applied for this upcoming school year. Um, those families range in, uh, various sizes and, uh, A M I's. Um, but that is something that we could report back to as well.
Is the breakdown by? Would you, sorry, would you repeat that louder? I, um, I hear you. Is the breakdown by population, like the percentage?
It's a combination of, uh, population funding, but then also children funding.
Okay.
So like a com, it's a hybrid combination of the two. These numbers, and Carolyn's been in, uh, aware of this too, these numbers have been all over the place. At the beginning of the year, we started with the town of Dillon, uh, potentially funding up to 245,000, which we backed that down and stuck with last year's numbers, which are reflective in, in Exhibit C. Uh, and what we've asked is for E C O to further map out and define where those families are. So we have an accurate percentage in future years.
But it could be that people are working in Dillon, um, even if they're not living within the jurisdiction.
Historically, we've often taken the approach that we sort of support the community in and around Dillon and working in Dillon, living in Dillon. Of the general community sense more than strictly Dillon residents sense.
Do the, do we know how many workers are actually in Dillon? Does anybody have a count on that? Um, like, like people who actually work in all the businesses and. I mean, I have a, a rough estimate from providing free lunches to many of those businesses, but the time. Um, I just didn't know, like council governments or anything has count on.
I've never heard that number.
Okay.
Number employees.
Within the jurisdiction of Dillon. Yeah, it would be an interesting number. Just a thought.
Having been at the meeting with Nathan, uh, at the manager's, uh, mayor's meeting where this was all discussed, that I, I think it deserves our support.
Other comments or questions or discussion? I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2725, series of 2025.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Councilmember Luck?
Yeah.
Richard?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Hendrix? Tyne?
Yes.
Samuel?
Yes.
Mascherano?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 10, consideration of resolution number 2825, series of 2025, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Summit County Government and the towns of Blue River, Breckenridge, Dillon, Frisco, Silverthorn and Keystone to form a mountain community coalition to intervene in the X L Mountain Energy Project proceeding before the Colorado Public Utilities Commission.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Included in your packet is resolution 28 dash 25, series of 2025. Uh, this I G A, um, in good faith with the other Mount Co, Community Coalition members. Uh, the town of Breckenridge took the lead on this and essentially what this is doing is, uh, a legal proceeding to intervene in the mountain energy project. Uh, many of the participating entities, including all the towns and the county, uh, felt that the mountain energy project, um, was short-sighted in that we wanted to intervene and make sure that the project was more robust, but then also, um, going to impact the consumers, uh, in terms of, uh, costs for the long haul. As a result of this, uh, the legal counsel, uh, Sarah M. Keen and Sarah Judkins of Kaplan and Kirsch, uh, are negotiating with, uh, X L Energy as we speak on a potential settlement that, uh, we should have further information on tomorrow, once it's filed. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the I G A. Our participation in this has been minimal. However, we've been interacting as a, uh, coalition member here. Um, and our total costs are 6,880 dollars and 90 cents. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the resolution.
Nathan, questions or comments, discussion?
Um, so basically it gives us a legal standing and a voice, that, kind of what it is or?
The, the, the thought, uh, process around this I G A, uh, and this was again brought forward at a mayor's managers commissioners meeting, is to ensure that the citizens in our respective jurisdictions and the county, uh, don't go in with, uh, substantial costs uh, relating to non-pipeline alternative, uh, measures that focused in one sector of energy instead of a full, um, portfolio of energy products. There's a lot of technicals speaking around that, but try to break it.
Nailed it.
We can ask Sean.
Other questions or comments or discussion for or against? Hey, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
To, to approve resolution number 2825, series of 2025?
Was that a motion in favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, council? Roll call. Councilmember Richard?
Yes.
Luck?
Yes.
Tyne?
Yes.
Hendrix?
Yes.
Samuel?
Yes.
Oliver? Mascherano?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, item 11, selection of economic development advisory. Okay, item eleven, selection of economic development advisory committee members. Adrian, I was in the ladies room when you explained this. You want everybody to put a check mark next to your top seven?
Yes.
On number one. So you, everybody has a stack of voting leaves here. Don't put your name on it. Is anybody interested in a conversation or did you get the information you needed from the interviews? Ready to do a first round of voting? And then my assumption is the way this works, whoever gets the most votes, we go down the line until there's some kind of tie, and then that's what vote ballot number two is for.
We were thinking that if there was any kind of tie for the lost position, we would come back to the council and ask for a vote on the tie break. The other question that's come up, our plan was to have the terms for the longest period of time assigned to the people who got the most votes, since they would have the most consensus, and then work our way down the list of the term.
So do the rules make sense?
Seven checks only.
Seven checks, you would have to give four votes to get in?
Yeah. You have to give four votes to get in. I understand. You pulled it in half or anything?
Yes.
The number nine? Yeah, so it's number nine.
What is that? A salad, the salad? Where? In Alaska?
They, uh.
Are you going?
Trying to say.
That's where you're going to? Or just like a deep fishing trip? Chicken.
Allergic to chicken.
So I can eat turkey. I don't know. They're different according to the.
The last trip, I was like. Might put that up.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that bad freaking.
That's true.
I know, that was so much.
I'm leaving, yeah, there's. Oh, that's here. That's, that's my neighbor. And then from Lake Dillon?
Yeah.
I don't know where that is.
Is that a golden? I think it's a brown.
Gold, right?
They stocked it when they did.
Arctic charm, gold and.
Yes. Is that the one? Well, Arctic charm here.
I don't know.
Yes, it's, it's, I heard, because he's. Like the fisherman's taking it down. Every time and then.
The body.
That's amazing, isn't it? Like, did he get that out of the lake?
Just off the shore.
That is amazing. Yeah, right. You know, honestly, like if I'm fishing. Who's even fishing? I get that, yeah. I caught one.
Um, I don't, I don't.
That would you cut your?
Yeah, so I don't.
But, yeah, so that's, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. You don't know if we'll get it again, but we'll see.
We have.
This is a smaller.
Hundred employees and.
That's a hell of a deal.
Yeah, that's, they call it chicken. But you can still keep that one? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sometimes these can be. Yeah. That one. Did you have to like re-dry any of it or like send it? They, yeah, they processed it.
Well, it's okay.
You guys are growing.
It's quite the challenge when I got it.
How many pounds? You have to get a poly freezer.
There's supposed to be a structure up.
It was funny because I had my neighbor and then I like, and I just hit it. It was like third, you know, the third floor. Yeah, and it's, I was like, it was empty and it's like, hey, and it made it. But like the salmon, you know, the filet.
Meta Mayor? We have a, we have a vote.
And we don't need to re.
Don't need to revote. Yes, they good job.
Job, yes.
All right.
So on our, our seven most voted for candidates were David Escolin, Andrew Mark, Owosco, did I say that right? Edward O'Brien, Sean Ugrin, Shannon White, Jessica Taylor, and Scott Downing.
Congratulations.
Great.
Yay.
Yay. Okay. So in case you didn't hear it, Dave Askelen, Scott Downing, Andrei Owosco, Eddie O'Brien, Jessica Taylor, Sean Ugrin, Shannon White. Thanks for your time, everyone, and thank you for adding it all up.
I want to say too, just, I want to thank the eighteen applicants.
Yeah, oh my gosh.
I was, I was thrilled.
Thank, thank you, everyone, for your commitment to Dillon. And, I mean, could have gone a hundred ways.
Yeah.
Um, okay, great. And? Great question.
Second Wednesday, five thirty.
Okay, um, and so next, we have a resolution declaring recreating the EDAC committee and appointing these seven people. And then do we need two ex officio members or whatever?
We need two ex officio town council members and in talking with Doug and Catherine earlier today, we would fill in the names based off of the number of votes received, so like longer term and then just work down, which I think is how Doug rattled off the names.
I didn't read them.
Oh, that's fine.
You got it.
We have the vote.
So now we just need two council members to be ex officio, and then we can fill that in on this resolution.
Yep, so Rachel's our first liaison. Is that ex officio?
One of the, one of the ex officio members will be planning and zoning commission.
Yeah.
Do you know who that would be?
I guess we need to pick. Oh, because we need it in the resolution. I, yeah, I don't know how we're gonna.
Have any of them expressed interest?
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't know that we.
Can we, can we do the resolution and say TBD on the planning and zoning and a planning and zoning member to be determined?
Yeah, you could leave that vacant and then bring back another resolution just to appoint that one person.
Is that all we need? Rachel? Yeah.
Oh, no, I already done it. I don't want to. Oh, no, no, I said I already was. I mean, it's like a.
Okay, so I would entertain a, um, a motion to approve resolution number twenty-nine, twenty-five, series of twenty-twenty-five, inserting the names of the elected candidates based on the vote results, plus Rachel as the first, as the council representative and the planning and zoning representative to be determined at a future date. Is there a second? Or is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right. Linda and then Josh. Any further discussion? Thanks again for everyone for your commitment to Dillon and for being here and for showing up and taking the time to talk to us. And do this with us and we hope to see you more in the future through this and then continuing at meetings and there are always going to be opportunities to get involved. Roll call.
The mayor shall appoint a chairman from among the committee at large members. The committee shall then organize themselves in such a manner, so.
Who got the most votes? Can they appoint their own chairman?
That's what I was thinking. I mean.
I, I think they should appoint their own chairman.
Because we don't know. They wanted to.
So you would modify the resolution.
To volunteer that.
Yeah, you'll have to modify.
We don't need to have everything. We don't need to be involved in it. Let's get out of it, but they're not their own.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion to modify the resolution to assert that the board, the EDAC commit, Economic Development Advisory Committee will be in charge of appointing their own chairperson and add that to the existing resolution.
Would you like those to just be from the EDAC members?
From the actual true EDAC members. Not that you're not a true EDAC.
Oh, no. That's, I don't.
I mean, the appointed EDAC members.
Like, is there going to be a staff? I don't know how our other committees work.
Basically, we just put staff in as needed.
Okay.
I would, I would take the lead on this.
And we probably don't need it.
Okay, so.
It says the town manager shall appoint staff.
So I did make a motion to amend the resolution, letting them choose their own chairperson. Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Thanks. Further discussion on that amendment? Roll call. Councilmember Luck?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Time?
Yes.
Samuel?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Askerber? Yes. And then a roll call or any further discussion about the now amended original resolution, which has been motioned and seconded? Roll call.
Is there a need, um, is there anything in there about the meeting date or no? I mean, that's.
Wednesdays, wasn't it?
So are we sticking with the second Wednesday at five thirty?
No, it said, um, so it said they, they get to choose their own meeting date.
Oh, I like that idea.
That, did I read that right or not?
Sorry, I had the old version open earlier and that had a Wednesday and we decided that part of organizing their own affairs, they could choose the meeting.
Okay, yeah, I like that.
Great, great question. So you guys will organize your own affairs and choose your meeting date? Um, roll call for the original motion. Councilmember Luck?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Time?
Yes.
Samuel?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Askerber?
Yes.
Thanks again, everyone. Item thirteen, review of future council agendas. What occurs to me is, do we need an update on the what's happening at La Riva? Is anyone else interested in having something like that or in the underground or?
Yes, I am.
We get that on a future agenda, please, Nathan?
How much it has to do with the insurance changing or if it has anything to do with it? And I'd also like to hear from the chief kale about the firearm. If that was in the underground or if it was, she said it was in the vicinity, so.
Right outside.
It could have been.
From there. Um, okay, so as much information as we can get about what's happening there, and I've gotten other emails too about this sort of like blindsiding the residents there. So I think a lot of people would be interested in hearing an update on that.
What are the items we have on the future agenda list for the twelfth is goals for EDAC? Do you want to create goals for them or do you want them to create goals and then give you a recommendation as to what they want to do?
And, and I'd like to give some goals from the.
Yeah, let's do both.
Yeah.
Both.
I have a, I have a question about parking. So the, the parking that's, you know, we're coming into some really big concerts and, um, I don't know if it's an agenda item or just, uh, if we just need to study it as we're coming into these big concerts, so. Probably stumbling through this, but the parking, as far as I can tell, just walking around and looking at it, it affects waterfront and rec path access. It's affecting Marina Park use and then it affects the Marina operations at times. And so I was trying to understand it more. That's why I asked for the the agreement we have with the parking group or company. But I don't know how to. I think it needs to be looked at and I, I also wondered if partners in parking, parking could be identified. But for example, I don't think we have like agreements with the two churches that have the large parking lots. And that I know that are in place, right? We don't have any.
No.
Okay, that's, I'm trying to understand it and I'm coming in from left field a little, but I, um, uh, also, I know the, um, post office really doesn't, there's certain areas they don't want people parking in, but is there other space that might be available? So I was just wondering. Oh.
Is a more thorough parking discussion something everyone's sort of open to in the future? It would be. I'm seeing nods.
Yep, I'd like to hear how much it's hurting the Marina. The Marina business.
So for a timeline on this, we want to wait until after the, um, after these sort of upcoming events to, to allow us staff to gather information and get a report at the end of the season or do we, is it something you wanted more expeditiously?
Say as soon as possible. Say as soon as possible. But I didn't bring it up.
No, I brought it up because I've heard a number of people talking about it and it is, so if you're and I don't understand exactly how the checkpoint works and how the reservations work, if there's reservations or if it's just you buy, you're buying parking ahead of time and you're, I don't understand if it's a full reservation space. So I I'm trying to understand it and I don't have a full picture of it. And, um, but community members, the other thing was, um, enough A D A spaces for the free concerts. There were some concern over, um, right at the end, like a Lotus, so that big, that big, big concert. We had everybody parking, people were parked by fire hydrants, they were parked by, um, street signs, they were parked, I mean, it was so parked up. And is there, uh, I just would like to know if V M Ss or anyone or the chief is concerned about those things where people are, they're trying to get it slide in last minute and they're parking, uh, anywhere roughly that they can possibly find a space. And we're coming up to these other big, very popular, and are they sold out? Some of the new ones ones coming? So I think it's, I didn't know, like, can we fly a drone and see how everybody parks it maybe?
Uh, we do that regularly. As far as the parking, you can reserve like on your cell phone or via the app like days beforehand and drive up and park. You have to show them your, you know, your confirmation receipt. Uh, some of these shows, they've had availability to where you can drive up and then
Five?
pay to then park there. Um, Jesse, you want to have it have the reservation tally for like the upcoming shows this week, do you?
I don't hand me now, but.
Because some shows have been like very popular in the reservations. Others have been like less than ten. And our concern from a staff perspective is that that lot should be full. So some of the parking issues that you're seeing with like people parking around fire hydrants and illegally, well, if there's open parking spots in that parking lot, people should park there. It would alleviate some of the other congestion issues.
So what you're saying is sometimes. Yeah, so I have been, I hit, I've gotten a few. So early, you know, like on a, like on a Friday morning, you can't park there.
So what I'm wondering is, is this a midseason conversation or is this a learn from learn from what worked and didn't work at the work at the end of the season? Conversation because realistically, Jesse, even if we identify something, would you be able to pivot for the remaining shows? Like by the next, in three weeks or?
Depends. And I would say that Interstate has been actively working with us as we identify issues throughout the season. So if there are issues that you want us to try to address right away, they've been really receptive to that. Like we're even implementing some new ideas down at the Marina this week, starting on Friday. So, yeah, it's up to you all how quickly you want to talk about it.
Uh, what are the new ideas they're going to do at the Marina? Because that that was, um, customer service. Um, I'm I'm customer service oriented and so there were families that got stuck parking away, away from the Marina because there was no parking for their rental boats and they, how they made their way down there. And and it seemed odd to me that they're supposed to be getting their boats, I don't know, ten, ten in the morning or noon and there's not parking available at the Marina. So I was surprised by that.
Mm hmm. Although I would also wonder, are those actually concert people taking up those spaces? Because they don't really tend to show up that early.
Yeah.
Some shows, yes, but not that it's filling up the parking lot either. So I think there's multiple things going on.
Okay, so we don't necessarily know exactly who's parking in the big Marina lot and what, why. Specifically, okay.
Well, yeah, and that was the challenge that we, uh, displayed back in April is that for this to really work, you sort of have to do the entire footprint, not just like these shows. Otherwise, you're going to have people skirting the system and other parties that are impacted.
But, yeah.
Am I good? Is this resonating a little bit?
Yeah, that was one of our very first meetings. So it's a, yeah, I was trying to wrap my head around it. Honestly, I had to go walk around and look at it and see how it's happening and what's going on. You know, because I I was trying to understand, yeah. And I and I'm just concerned about the waterfront being used, but but like talking to those people that were parking up in the Dillon Plaza. So so there there was, they they wanted to access the rec path, you know, for a multi hour ride. And so, but you would have to pay to act to park down by the rec path, right? So they were parking up in the Dillon Plaza area by the coffee. So I'm, that's what I'm trying to get my, I just don't understand it. And so I didn't know if we were studying it or, you know, it sounds like you've been talking to Interstate, so I just wanted to know where we were and if there's any policy decisions that need to be made around it.
Well, so a couple of the ideas that we rolled out to them is that we wanted dynamic pricing to make sure that those re quote unquote reserved spots were filled. So, uh, everything prior to two weeks before a show is half price. So it's not fifty dollars, it's like twenty, it's less than thirty dollars once you do the service charge. And then everything within two weeks would go up to that full price to try to encourage people to book early. But so far as issues in parking, it's been, uh, Marina, especially right around lunchtime, but then, uh, complaints from the neighborhoods. Of people parking in the neighborhood. So maybe we should try like some reverse psychology and say it's a hundred dollars to park on Buffalo, Gold Run to force people into the town core. The problem, the problem that we have too is that parking that we have for the amphitheaters way underparked. It's way underparked.
Underparked.
There's not enough parking at the amphitheater.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you meant it wasn't being utilized nearby the the venue.
Right, so like what?
You're saying. If thirty five hundred people show up in their own cars, we are severely underparked.
Yeah.
We are severely underparked. So what Jesse and I have been talking about is how do we incentivize multimodal and like Summit Stage, walking, biking, uh, rec path, uh, etc.
Boots and bikes. Breckenridge was just talking about boots and bikes today. So how do you incentive, yeah, how do you say you want people doing as much as you can?
It's a unique challenge down there.
So can we get parking, a full parking discussion, kind of, maybe not full, but a sort of focused on the issues parking discussion on the twelve?
Uh, yeah, if if you all want to push off some of these other things like, uh, master planning, I'd be happy to talk about parking for an hour or more. Because it's very complex and no matter what you do with the current setup, it's not going to work. You either have to do all or nothing.
Is this a priority for council to move some stuff back to have this conversation?
If it's hurting hurting the experience of the expensive ticket, yes, we should address it quickly.
Now, let's say we haven't seen a lot of shows this year. It was, Lotus was very unique because there were people coming from all over. U County, from Denver. We really saw, we saw a ton of locals there, but we saw a ton of drive traffic too. And they all came individually in their cars. They didn't carpool. They parked all over. So I would say Lotus is really the only show this year that we've seen issues, at least that I've really been aware of. There were a lot of parking tickets written that night, so the cops are definitely, PD was out in force making sure that people were. They said they made some interesting choices. That was Kale's words, she's words. So that was the only one that we've really seen. And and it wasn't really issues, it was just people making bad choices of where they parked. But there was still parking, Cardinal Fifty One had some spots available, Dillon Ridge, all of the places that if you know, you know, but those people didn't know, which is a huge win for us that we had so much drive traffic to that show, but it could, did definitely cause traffic issues. Other than that, though, we really have not heard of parking issues other than the constant conflict or the collaboration between Marina patrons, amphitheater patrons, all converging on the lakefront on big show days. And how do we really start to differentiate the right, the user groups that need to be where they belong parking? And I think we've, we're going to test something out this weekend. And we're going to kind of see no more just kind of on your honor system. It's going to be that you actually need to go into the Marina shop or to the tiki bar or to one of the concessioners, scan a Q R code to prove that you are a user of those user groups. So that's something we're piloting now and pivoting to see how, if that can be more effective.
Can we rent the A Cafe parking lot?
No, that's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm saying. What are the parking lots that are open? Might be able to, that might want some, wants some income on their spaces. Just like any, like if you're going to a baseball game.
Yeah. Great. Thanks for bringing it up. Just curious, what does it run to get a parking ticket in the town of Dillon? Is it forty dollars, fifty dollars?
I don't know.
Here's kind of parking ticket. Craig's not in back anymore, is he? Not, sorry, not you, Craig, other Craig. Or was Adam back there? Oh, I thought I saw Craig.
We can bring that back too. We can shift some things around to add it to the next meeting.
It might be cheaper to pay the parking ticket.
So.
Any other, any other conversations?
Um, for maybe a a future work session, I don't know what the appetite is for maybe reviewing immigration law going into the fall. You know, the ICE bud, uh, ICE's budget for twenty six is going from four billion to thirty billion dollars. And, uh, I think we need to be educated as to, you know, we have a supermarket here. We we don't know if all of a sudden we're confronted what we can and can't.
Um, is that a conversation everyone's interested in? Someone's probably less immediate.
Less immediate, yes.
Later.
But Colorado laws is, uh, has been somewhat proactive and we need to know what separates us from everyone else. It's over.
Overish. It's good. I'm seeing nods on some sort of immigration update, sort of informing us of where we stand and what laws apply to what's going on and the ICE. Great, anything else?
Um, just. Where do we meet? Here, here.
Well, you could also, you could also move it.
Don't, don't leave. Well, the meeting after.
Okay.
It's the thirteenth.
Is that like a standing? Those standing? Is is that an issue with when we have our? That's fast.
Well, you can move it around. Uh, I mean, it, we we would just publish the location.
Okay, if there's other.
Right. And it's just an advisory committee, so like in full transparency, we'd be like eating at Rachel's house at this time. There's her address. Bring an appetizer.
So so is is this? Are are these notice meetings?
Yes.
And.
Just like planning and zoning.
Open to the public but not council?
Because they're supposed to be advising us. Yes, Shannon. Oh, sure. I'm not even sure there's a microphone.
To be fair, we arranging the scheduling on the, um, E D A C meeting. It was advertised as Wednesday, so for the people who weren't here and everything, that was what people committed to as far as I'm available on Wednesdays. Not saying that that means that I'm not available other days, but that was, um, part of the application.
Should we set our first meeting date or is that beyond the scope?
I think that's probably beyond the scope of councils, just saying because they're. And it's hard to pick. Um, can you guys make sure that Adrian gets all of your email addresses if she doesn't have them yet? You were just elected to E D A C. She has all of your contact. Okay, um, anything else for future council agendas? For the mayor's report, just thank you for your continued engagement, everyone. This is great. I think we are all heading in the right direction. Thanks for covering me.
Do better next.
Any other council member, I heard it went really well. Any other council member reports or comments? Town managers report, Nathan?
A couple of quick updates. Our sales tax is starting to rebound. So year to day, we're down approximately five percent, one hundred ninety thousand, which is great. Uh, a couple, uh, construction updates. Swat Mountain Road, um, a lot of things going on there. Um, so right now it's closed between, uh, Lowry Camp campground all the way down, uh, into Summit Cove. A lot of updates going on there. Um, I included a leak, a link in, uh, my report through Summit County's website. They're also going into like a, uh, you can text your number into like a six digit code and receive updates. So please check that out. Uh, the undergrounding project at the Dam Roads ongoing, uh, which is great. That project's been in the work for, I would say, close to a decade. And then, uh, one of the last things I wanted to mention is that, um, all the towns, the county and other towns and counties outside of Summit County are exploring the formation of a regional transit authority. I'm trying to work with the consultant, Bill Ray, um, who was hired by the county, uh, under the Summit Stage, uh, to come in here and give a presentation on what that means, what it could look like, the the beneficial, um, aspects of creating this R T A, hopefully as early as August. So we're on a tight timeline here. Uh, the first step is a M O U to explore it, um, with the ending deadline being, uh, an election in November of twenty twenty six, which everybody who's participating in would take it to the. Uh, and that's all I have.
Questions or comments for Nathan?
Oh, I do have one more. Uh, we need to figure out a a budget retreat date, but then I also sent out at the request uh, after the last meeting, uh, November and December, uh, council meeting dates. Uh, it seems like staff can do the first and third Tuesday of the month. That work for you? Yeah, for both, uh, November and December.
First and third.
Yep, first and third, uh, Tuesday of the month.
Are you saying which one works best?
Does that work for you?
Both?
Yeah, we have to.
Instead of doing it at the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, to do the retreat, I understand.
Because we have, uh, Veterans Day, uh, and also have the week of Thanksgiving.
Oh, to have our regular meeting on the first and third?
Right.
Okay.
Regular meeting first and third month of November.
Election, Election Day, the fourth and the eighteenth.
Sure.
I'm going to miss part of the work session on the eighteenth. Dentist appointment with my children. So that's for November. And December. And December would be the second and the.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. That work for everyone? And I'm going to miss part of the work session on the second one in November.
Okay.
The first part of the work.
Still the retreat in August. Any ideas for, um, budget retreat?
Date? Do you have any that you're suggesting? Like the nineteenth, the off Tuesday?
August twenty eighth.
First day of school? For for kindergarteners?
And if not, we can, uh, send out a doodle poll. That's for beneficial.
I, that would be easier for me if there was a list of options and then we can see what works best for everyone without trying to hash out right here. Wednesdays are totally free for me in August. Anything else, anyone? Look, look for a doodle poll for a budget retreat.
Yep, we'll give it to the center.
Great. What's that? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I was just asking Nathan if you or somebody on the staff will send out notification of who got selected for E D A C. People who aren't here.
Adrian, you'll contact everyone?
Yep.
Would you mind sending an email to council when you send the doodle poll out? Because I've had this problem forever, but they don't seem to go. Because I've had this problem forever, but they don't seem to go to my main inbox. They go to the like junk one, which I never, ever check. Just say, hey, don't forget to fill this out so that we all remember to go do it.
Could we include a thank you to everybody that applied? Okay.
It's sort of like a, yeah, like a basic.
Appreciation.
And then I guess we also need to reach out to the Planning and Zoning Commission somehow and let them know to appoint.
Yep. But the next meeting, we have that name, whoever wants it, ready? Probably get him on the first meeting in August?
Yep.
Great. Next agenda item is adjournment. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned at 8:53.